Welcome everyone to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is December 11th, 2024. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. It's also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting was provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, can you please summarize any public comment received?
No public comment was received, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, I would ask you to please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection, honor the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote. All right, we have a full gaggle of our commissioner, Board of Commissioners this evening. Andy Fremeth is here as our solicitor. And we will now go to... Oh, quick announcement before we go to what I was going to go to, and that is that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its December 9th, 2024 workshop meeting to discuss two litigation matters. Another announcement regarding our 2025 budget adoption at the conclusion of this evening's business meeting. The Board of Commissioners will conduct a budget hearing on the 2025 budget. The Board will also conduct a special meeting to close out the business of 2024 and to adopt the 2025 budget. Any questions or comments related to the 2025 budget should be held until the budget hearing is conducted. So at this time, the Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And if you come to the microphone, please start with your name and address.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Klinger and my address is 7811 Elm Avenue. And I'm here to bring new business, and it is concerning the million-dollar investment that this township made on open space on 38402 Hawes Lane. We, I attended the planning commission meeting and was pleased to have several safeguards put in place. All of us who attended were happy that several safeguards were put in place to preserve the integrity of the open space under the stress of the 16 townhouse development. And we are, the first one of these safeguards was that a, well, this is more of a general ecological view is that the trees that were going to be removed, the developer was going to provide the details, the diameter and species of these trees. And Chris Caravan, the president of WB Homes, did say that he was going, that they had done a complete tree inventory. And another one of our members is going to briefly discuss that. And then the second was that an arborist, an ISA-approved arborist, would be working with the placement of, would be working in placing protection barriers around the trees that were to be, you know, we all want the trees that aren't going to be taken down to survive. And we all know that these trees undergo huge amount of stress when their roots are being run over by construction vehicles. And they codified a, that in the, in the plan is codified that ISA-approved arborist would be working with the developers. And then the third thing is that the township said that they would be open to moving where the driveway and the parking lot and the path through our township's land, through this native forest, would be, would be placed. And so that, and we, so we, we'd like details about that. And we're going to, some other members will briefly talk about that. And, and then beyond that, we want to, the Springfield Township received a $300,000 grant and from Monco and one, a $200,000 grant from PA, or it might have been the other way around. But we, Springfield Open Space has actually written into the grant to do, to bring volunteer work to take away invasive species. And we are ready and willing to help and with that. But we are at a loss to how to proceed with this because the plan, the, the, there is no, there's no agenda items in Park and Rec, and there's no agenda items in the EAC. So I'll, I'll cede to Terry.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Terry Hepner. I'm at 121 Hawes Lane. And I'm also here with Alex from Springfield Open Space. And my question about the property is about the trees. And it's my understanding that there was an inventory of the trees to be removed, including species and diameter. And I'm wondering, do we have access to that information and where that information is? Because without that information, you know, our group is going to be of little service in our goal to help preserve that property. And maybe even more importantly is the issue of, has there been an inventory of the trees that are supposed to be saved? Because I think that that's really more important than perhaps the inventory of the trees that are to be removed. It's, so it's my understanding, as Alex said, that Chris Caravan did a tree inventory. And I'm just wondering, where are the details of that? Could we have access to that? And in addition to that, the vernal pools are important as well. And I'm not quite sure, I've seen the map where the path is supposed to go through the township's property. And I'm wondering, is there a goal to also save those vernal pools? As Alex said, we really want to help in this endeavor to preserve the township's investment in this property. But we do need that information going forward. We need that information going forward, and we need to kind of be put on some sort of agenda or timeline so that we could help the township make that happen. So are you, am I just making comments now, or are you allowed to answer my question at this point?
We can address it. And I'm going to ask our manager to give an update where we are on that. But my understanding is that no activity is done on the township portion side other than the demolition, so you want to?
Yeah, the developer was given access to demolish the existing structures on there. And there were 11 trees that were to be removed as part of that. They were listed on the plan to be removed all, all the time. But they needed to remove the trees in order to get access to the homes. So that's the work that you see going on today. Nothing has been done on the township portion of the property at present. And you're correct, that there will be a certified arborist working under the direction of the township's engineer and then build to the developer throughout the process of construction. And I believe that's even going to start with the, the layout of the ENS controls, because they're going to put out the tree protection fencing at the same time. So that all happened in conjunction with the township engineer. So, you know, it's not like the developer is going to call in a buddy to be his arborist to come in. The engineer has selected the arborists. The arborist will be working under the direction of the engineer. So that's all to come in the future.
Okay.
The developer is presently awaiting his NPDES permit in order to get, in order to be authorized to move forward with any of that work. As of right now, the only thing he's allowed to do is the demolition, of which he's secured a building permit. The path that you referenced is to be field-fit, and it's to be done under the direction of the engineer so that we don't damage the existing trees that are there or minimize that type of damage.
And the vernal pools?
And the vernal pools, I imagine, I mean, it's, it's, it's proposed path, like, but it's going to be field-fit. So I'm sure they'll wander around all those things. The arborist is also going to identify any hazardous limbs or trees in the vicinity of the path, both on the township's property and on the development that's going to happen as well. So that if there's anything, you know, in the area where a pedestrian or a park user might get harmed, the developer is going to have to remove those as well. So I think that answers those questions. There was also a question about moving the driveway. The driveway was not going to get moved. Some of the parking spaces could get moved if there was significant trees that were going to be damaged as a result of that. But I just wanted to look at, and then as far as the tree inventory is concerned, there is a tree inventory that was performed with diameters and sizes that are listed on the plan. They're part of the record plan set that we can provide to you.
Yeah, that would be great, because we had, we do have some of the information. We don't have the, the tree inventory information. But you're saying there's going to be updated information about the trees once the arborist comes in?
There's, there's a tree removal plan that has been submitted as part of the plan set. And then when the arbor, now, keep in mind that that tree inventory was completed several years ago, right? So before we accept any of the places where the path is going to go and we say to the developer, yeah, you fulfilled your obligations, the arborist is going to identify any trees that look hazardous or have hazardous limbs and things that we want removed.
Is the arborist going to just identify trees that seem hazardous or trees that are worth saving as far as their native species or diameter?
Unless they're proposed to be removed, they're going to stay.
Okay.
Unless they're deemed to be a hazard by the arborist.
Understood. Do you know, do you have an approximate timeline that we should be looking at as far as the arborist coming in?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Much of it's going to be dependent upon when the NPDES permit is issued.
Okay. And who would be in charge of deciding the field-fit for the vernal pools? Is, is it somebody? Is a township engineer here or no?
He's not, he usually comes to our Monday workshop meetings.
So, so I'm wondering, is, obviously his background is in engineering. Is his background also in an ecological perspective as far as being knowledgeable about vernal pools as well, or perhaps?
He's a board member on the Montgomery County Conservation District. I don't know if that helps or hurts, to help you out.
I think it, I think it helps either, I would be thinking, either he would be knowledgeable or he would reach out to somebody who is more knowledgeable, I would hope.
We could ask him to speak on this at our January workshop meeting.
Okay.
He starts every January workshop meeting with issues of his matters. And we can ask him to prepare to, to talk about this.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Joyce Petrencheck. My address is 1001 Fraser Road, Erdenheim. I'm here as well with Springfield Open Space. And my goal was to also, you know, ask how we're protecting and preserving. I'm a money girl, so I'm an attorney and a CPA, so I'm from the money end. How can we best help preserve this wonderful asset that we invested a million dollars of taxpayer money in? So is there any way that our organization can help protect it and help you all be stewards of our investment? So if there's anything that we could do and be more involved in the process, that, that I think is something that's really important. So Alex and Terry said a lot, so.
Well, I would welcome you to stay, stay involved with it as this project goes. And January could be a good start to that, to touch base with the engineer. Whether you come to that meeting or not, we'll ask him to speak on that.
Great.
And keep you informed when that works happen.
Yeah, because we're looking for more transparency. So we have, we have an organization that's, a lot of people are interested in what's going on, what's happening. They were interested in saving it. But the, the talk about it has kind of subsided now that things are kind of starting to develop. We just want to make sure it's protected and preserved correctly and that we are getting everything that we can get from grants and everything else for our township, so.
Yeah, and we, we did a pretty good job covering most of the costs through grant funding, so that it's pretty minimal impact on the taxpayers. And our intention always with this particular solution to that, to that, to that land was to keep our portion as a, as a passive park. So other than the walking trail and really minimal parking, and as Mike alluded to, removing problem branches and that kind of thing, we really don't want to do too much to it.
Right.
And preserve it.
Yeah, because there's a lack of open space here in our, our township.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just curious, how many members are there in Springfield Open Space actively working right now?
Well, we're, we're, I want to be free to get four members on board. So we also have...
We have a mailing list, that's extensive.
Okay, great.
And we have lots of positions there if you have the one.
We love positions. Wait, do we?
Yeah, just one more. I, I, we were, it's, it's adjacent to this issue of staying involved. Is that the, I'm also on the open space subcommittee of the EAC. And we have been trying to identify members of the different township committees that intersect interest in open space. And I approached the Parks and Recreation Commissioner Liaison, Susanna Ratzvan. And we was, and asked if we could have a, a member come to our meetings. And she replied that her member, that Parks and Recreation is stretched too thin, that they don't have, I'm paraphrasing. And that, that, that the members that are going to committee meetings are, are caught up in five hours a week at the Walnut Street Committee and the Parks and the Rec Committee. And the Parks and Rec has been lopsided on the Rec side of it in terms of workload. Like, there's problems, are issues with Little League and who gets to use the batting range. And, and, and not a whole lot of discussion about parks and native planning. And we would love it if Parks and Recreation could maybe have some more members. Or if we, if the committee just, if the commissioners did decide to have an open space, an actual open space committee, or a Parks Committee, which would be, have more members and more people that were knowledgeable about, in the environment, about ecology, about plants, about botany, about how, and how that all intersects in helping make our township beautiful and protecting our watershed. So that's, I think it's a very important aspect. And it's, right now, I, people are, there's a lot of people that are dedicated and working hard as volunteers on these committees, but they just have too much to, work to do. And so that's, that's it for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
No.
Do you have anyone from Shade Tree Committee looking?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to add the paraphrasing part would, the only additional thing I would add is that I think all the members of the Park and Rec Committee acknowledge their interest in participating and having some crossover with EAC. I think at the time, truly, they just didn't have the time. But since that time, we've added a few new members and at least one, if not more, of those members would be interested in participating. I think it's just giving them some time to figure out how they want to interact. Right, we, at the time, we did add two additional members. Those are Brian Sokel and Christine, nah, Christina, who is heading up Friends of Mermaid Park. So you may be familiar with, with her and her work there. So anyways, I think they're, they have expressed interests. I think it's just a matter of finding capacity for everyone to participate in all the ways.
Okay, great. All right, we will now go to our committee reports. I do not have a report this evening, so we will go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four resolutions tonight. First is regarding the Mount St. Joe's Academy Land Development. I move the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated November 25, 2024, from Bernadette Kearney Esquire on behalf of the Mount St. Joe's Academy, 120 West Whisahican Avenue, Flower Town, extending the 90-day subdivision slash land development plan to review period through April 30th, 2025. The subject of the application is the construction of a new building addition, off-street parking spaces, landscaped courtyard and tennis courts. Extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to, to revise their plans in order to comply with the Springfield Township Code. That is my resolution.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Second resolution is number 1652, a land development, 1150 Mermaid Lane. I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1652, a resolution granting a waiver to the preliminary slash final land development review process from Stephen and Mary Kurtz, 1150 Mermaid Lane, Windmore. Subject to the waiver is the construction of a 576-square-foot storage shed in the rear yard of the property to store equipment for the roofing and siding business. The shed will be constructed over an existing asphalt paved pavement park, pavement parking lot. The waiver is conditional upon the owner acquiring all the required permits prior to the start of construction. That is my resolution.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next resolution is 1653, land development for 15 West Whisahican Avenue. I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1653, a resolution granting a waiver to the preliminary slash final land development review process for the schoolhouse, 15 West Whisahican Avenue, Flower Town. The subject of the waiver is the construction of 17 off-street parking spaces for the use by employees of the existing preschool slash daycare facility. Parking spaces will be constructed on a grant of a grass paver system that prevents soil compaction and provides a porous condition for the absorption of stormwater. The waiver is conditional upon the owners acquiring all the required permits prior to the start of construction. In addition, the township engineer shall approve the installation method for the grass paver system, including appropriate subsurface soil preparation. That is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. At the end of the last meeting, it was stated perhaps that those, that style of papers may have some opportunity to fail or, or might fail. Is there, what would, what would happen if they didn't work or they became?
There's going to be an O&M agreement that's going to be prepared by Mr. Fremeth, and they're going to be obligated to demonstrate that that will continue to absorb the water as it's intended. That's why the condition is placed in there, that the engineer's office are going to have to approve the method of soil preparation. And they're going to be on-site to oversee the installation.
And if over time it was discovered there was some issue with it, what would be theoretical remedies?
Would O&M ask to require them to make any necessary repairs and make sure it's brought back to its original condition? Or we could go in and make the repairs and then assess them and pause?
Got it, thank you.
So my, my last resolution is regarding the Historical Commission. I move, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments on the current motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, my last resolution is regarding the Historical Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Joseph Devine and David Sands to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Historical Commission. The new terms of service for both individuals shall expire December 31st, 2027. That is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to say, I serve with these gentlemen. They have both have been extremely contributory to the Historical Commission, and I will recommend them highly.
Great, any others? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, for all those waivers. We'll now go through the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you.
Regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the November rec, check reconciliation in the amount of $1,229,754.36 and the December bill listing in the amount of $631,460.68. That's my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Great, regarding the 2025 agency meeting schedule, 2025 agency meeting schedule will remain the same as the 2024 meeting schedule of the Board of Commissioners and Township Agencies. The Boarding Comis, the Board of Commissioners will continue to meet each month on the second Wednesday at 7:30, as well as the Monday preceding the second Wednesday at 7 o'clock. Both meetings will take place at the Springfield Township Administration Building. In addition, the Steering Committee that has been created for the creation of a public park at the former Tank Car Corporation of America property on Walnut Avenue will meet on the first Wednesday of each month at 5:30 at the Township Administration Building. And the Recreation Center Advisory Committee will continue to meet on the first Thursday of each month at 6 o'clock at the Free Library of Springfield Township. The complete list of the meeting schedule is available upon request. The meeting dates for the Board of Commissioners and Advisory Committees are posted on the township website and will be advertised in the Ambler Gazette. Next, regarding December zoning hearing board, the zoning, Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet next on Monday, December 16th, at 7 o'clock, slightly earlier this month, in which they will hear one application. The application of Donald Reichert, owners of the property located 8705 Carlisle Road in Windmore. The property owners are requesting a variance, seeking your approval to construct in addition to the home that proposed to reduce the front yard setback from 40 feet to 18 feet in depth. This property is a flag lot and the existing dwelling is located over 150 feet from Carlisle Road. That property is owned within the A Residential District of Ward Two of the township. Again, that application will be heard a little bit earlier this month, on Monday, December 16th, at 7 o'clock. And finally, resolution. I move the Board of Commissioners appoint, or adopt Resolution Number 1654, a resolution appointing Jennifer Gutkin and Michael Davy to new three-year terms of service as a member and an alternate member respectfully, respectfully, of the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board. The new terms of service for both individuals will ex- The new terms of service for both individuals will expire on the thirty-first of December, twenty-twenty-seven. That's my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Seven zip.
That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratsivan.
At this time, my committee has no report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ratsivan. We will go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will begin with the recycling report. During the month of November, two thousand and twenty-four, Springfield Township residents recycled one-hundred-and-forty-six-point-three tons of materials with a household participation rate of seventy-two-point-two percent. The net cost for the month was nineteen thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and thirty cents. Uh, last month, we, you know, we outlined a lot about, um, how to dispose of, uh, of recyclables. And with the holidays coming up, we know it's going to be a challenge. But if everybody could be careful to separate the trash from the paper and the cardboard and, and do their best for the environment and also the township. Uh, next, Christmas tree collection. The township's annual Christmas tree recycling program will begin on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five and will run through January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Residents are asked to remove all decorations and tree stands and place their tree at the curbside along with other refuse and recyclable materials on their normal collection day. Please do not wrap trees in plastic as the trees will be chipped into a useful mulch and made available to residents at the township's distribution site on West Wisahicken Avenue this spring. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Is an eggnog carton recyclable?
Depends on the cart, you know, there's a lot of wax and other things.
How about an empty glass fireball bottle?
I think that'd be fine.
Okay, great. Uh, we'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have one item tonight. Um, on December fifth, twenty-twenty-four, a bid opening was conducted for the Hillcrest Pond dredging project. Bids were received from three contractors in amounts ranging from ninety-five thousand to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the base bid and twenty-five dollars per cubic yard to fifty dollars per cubic yard for the alternate bid. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Xavier Landscaping Incorporated, Pocono Pines, P.A., their low base bid in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars for the removal, three thousand cubic yards of sediment. Xavier Landscaping also submitted the low alternate bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars per cubic yard, which will be exercised under the direction of the township engineer up to a maximum of fifty thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. This project will be completed using a combination of American Recovery Plan Act funds in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-five, one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and a donation from the Friends of Hillcrest Pond in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. That's my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this evening I have, uh, for the board's consideration, reappointment of two members and a resolution. Uh, I move that the Board of Commissioners approach, uh, appoint, uh, Sarah LaGuetta and Mary Ann Sunderland to new three-year terms of service as members of the Library Advisory Committee. The new terms of service for both of the individuals shall expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Uh, and on to resolution number sixteen sixty-five, uh, America two-fifty. Uh, on July fourth, twenty-twenty-six, the United States of America will celebrate its two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of founding of the country. In response, the Pennsylvania General Legislature, Legislature has created the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial America Twenty, uh, America Two-Fifty, P.A. Uh, to commemorate the occasion and to celebrate Pennsylvania's integral and the founding of the nation, uh, integral and founding of the nation. In twenty-twenty-six, the Philadelphia region will celebrate America's past and look towards its future by hosting the FIFA World Cup, Major League Baseball All-Star Game, NCAA Men's Basketball Tournament, uh, the PGA Championship and the fiftieth anniversary of Valley Forge as a national park, as well as the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Valley Forge in Camden. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution sixteen fifty-five, uh, should have been seventeen seventy-six, but sixteen fifty-five, a resolution supporting the Amer, the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial and encourage all Springfield Township and Montgomery County residents to take part in these events and to join in the celebration.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Lots. Like we celebrate our fifty-third anniversary, right?
Hmm.
All moving.
All three. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Okay, uh, at this time, we will now open, uh, the meeting up to public comment. Joyce, want to go again?
No.
No, you're good, okay.
I felt bad here.
Could be worse.
Wait, can I just, thank you, I, I didn't say at the end, um, before, for you, or the other two left, but thank you all for coming and for your commitment to it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
My thoughts are important.
Uh, all right, now that, uh, we are, uh, finished with public comment, I will accept a motion to adjourn our first meeting.
I'll make the.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote and we are adjourned temporarily. Okay.
And the money, the next part is budget meeting.
Yes, yes.
It's just the good stuff.
Okay, uh, this is our twenty-twenty-five budget hearing. I will accept a motion to convene a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five budget.
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And we are now in our twenty-twenty-five budget hearing. The purpose of this budget hearing, this hearing is being held in compliance with section seventeen zero-one of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code as last amended. The sole purpose of the budget hearing is for the Board of Commissioners to receive public comment on the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget. The legal requirements associated with the budget hearing have been met by publishing a budget notice in the Ambler Gazette issues of November twenty-fourth and December first, twenty-twenty-four, and making the budget available for public review in the Township Building, Free Library, and on the Township website. Twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget of Springfield Township is twenty million, three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. The proposed real estate tax, excuse me, the proposed real estate tax rate is four-point-six-five-zero mils and earned income tax rate of one-point-zero percent with an annual refuse service fee of two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Uh, at this time, we will accept testimony from the public.
Any online?
Uh, law requires us to wait for one hour for people to. Getting on that, okay, no public comment. Um, so now we will, uh, I will make a closing statement. All testimony taken in this budget hearing will be considered by the Board of Commissioners. A special meeting is scheduled to close the business of twenty-twenty-four and adopt the twenty-twenty-five budget of Springfield Township later this evening. And by later this evening, I mean right now. So at this time, I will accept the motion to close the public meeting on the twenty-twenty-five budget and to convene the twenty-twenty-five budget adoption meeting to close the business affairs of the township for twenty-twenty-four and to adopt the twenty-twenty-five budget. That is my motion.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't make a motion, I accept the motion. You moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And we are now in our budget meeting. Smooth sailing. Okay, the purpose of this meeting that we are now in is to close out the financial business of twenty-twenty-four and adopt twenty-twenty-five budget. The twenty-twenty-five budget is twenty million, three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars with a real estate tax rate four-point-six-five-zero mils and an earned income tax rate of one-point-zero percent. The average household with a real estate tax assessment of one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, at four-hundred dollars, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, four-hundred dollars will realize an increase of twenty-three dollars and fifty cents to their twenty-twenty-five real estate tax. The discounted annual refuse service fee will increase by five-hundred, excuse me, five dollars and forty-eight cents. So, uh, first item, we will accept public comment. Okay, hearing none. Uh, we have a couple of resolutions to get to. First one, uh, Commissioner McNamara.
This is resolution number sixteen fifty-six regarding Flower Town Country Club lease. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number sixteen fifty-six, a resolution setting forth the reconciliation of the twenty-twenty-four rental income and expenses of the Flower Town Country Club and authorizing the transfer of net receipts generated from the operation of the country club from one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and forty-nine cents from the township's general fund to the township's capital reserve fund. On an annual basis, the township reconciles the rental income generated from the lease of the country club with any expenditures incurred during the year. From two thousand and six to twenty-twenty-four, gross rental income has exceeded two million, seventy-nine dollars, one-hundred, seventy-nine, one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents and resulted in a net transfer exceeding one-point-two million dollars that are presently held in the capital reserve fund for future capital needs.
You have a motion, is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Uh, now we'll go to the second resolution, Commissioner Ratsivan.
Uh, this is resolution number sixteen fifty-seven, amending the twenty-twenty-four budget appropriations. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number sixteen fifty-seven, a resolution reconciling twenty-twenty-four expenditures that may be over-expended with unencumbered balances of certain expenditure items and revenues received in excess of budgetary projections. The general fund actual expenses of twenty-two million, one-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and two cents were reconciled within the encumbered balance expenditures of four million, three-hundred-and-one thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and two cents. The budgeted expenses for twenty-twenty-four were seventeen million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. The final expenditures were influenced by a one-time transfer of five-point-two million dollars from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. Without the transfer, general fund expenditures were nine-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and fifty-three cents less than budgeted. Uh, that is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Mike, can we make it so that all the numbers get in round next year, year of the year?
I, I prepare every budget so that they're rounded, but we just can't figure that out.
All right, don't worry. All right, we'll now go to Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, I give Mr. President.
The medals, sorry.
Uh, I'm reporting on ordinance number nine-eighty, adoption of the twenty-twenty-five tax rate and budget appropriations. Uh, I move the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number nine-hundred-and-eighty, uh, setting the twenty-twenty-five real estate tax rate of four-point-six-five-zero mils and that the expenses of the township for twenty-twenty-five, uh, are appropriately, are approximate, are appropriated from revenue and set forth in the table attached to and made a part of the ordinance number nine-hundred-and-eighty. That's my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, uh, last resolution, we'll go to Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I am proposing resolution number sixteen fifty-eight. Uh, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution sixteen, number sixteen fifty-eight, a resolution setting the twenty-twenty-five refuse service fee, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and eighty-one cents for each residential dwelling unit. Uh, a two-percent discount is available if the fee is paid in full prior to March thirty-first and that two-percent will almost cover the increase if, uh, you pay it ahead of time. Uh, that is the resolution.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote. All right, at this time, we will then, uh, open the floor again to public comment. And hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our second meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a unanimous vote and we are adjourned again.